Call the meeting to order, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. We have the amended agenda in front of you with the addition of 7G approved advertisement for summer seasonal employment. Is there any other changes to the agenda?
No.
Council? I've just got, informational, I'm just gonna give some information on from the mayor's conference last weekend that I attended, so. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
So moved.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the April 19th, 2017 regular meeting. They've been in your packet, is there any changes, corrections, clarification? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 19th, 2017 meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. This now brings us to our public open forum, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Seeing no one, our public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings. Brings us to our reports and presentations, first quarter ambulance department report.
Kathy?
Good evening, council and mayor. Here with the first quarter report for 2017, you can see it was already a busy year for us. In January, we had a total of 57 calls, which is actually down from last year this month, but then up from 2015, and you can see considerably up from 2007 where we had 23 in the same month. Of those 57 calls, eight were no loads or canceled calls, nine advanced life support transfers, and 16 BLS transfers, so of the 57, 49 were billed calls, $61,603 billed out for the month of January. February, we had a total of 53 calls, which is up from last year and 2015, and you can see in 2007, we had 20 calls in the same month. Of the 53 calls, 15 were no loads or canceled, 10 were advanced life support, 13 basic life support transports, for a total of 36 billed calls, and we billed out $46,075 that month. And in March, we had a very busy month with 75 calls, that's up from 56 from last year and 20 again in 2007, so 10 years ago, we were at 20 and we're at 75 in March of 2017. It's incredible. So 10 of those were no loads or canceled calls, four ALS transfers and 26 basic life support transfers, so 66 of those 75 were billed out calls, had a total of $77,172. So, so far this year, we billed out over $184,000. So, another busy year starting. Any questions for me? You can see down here, you know, which of the canceled no loads, how many we had of each category, and the receiving facilities, we're mainly going to St. Michael's here in Sock Center and St. Cloud Hospital.
Anyone have any questions? Everything as far as equipment wise, it's working right, ambulances are?
So far, yep, running, running pretty good.
Good.
The normal wear and tear, of course, but.
Right. No surprises?
Nothing major, no.
Okay, alright. Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Park board report? Ricky?
Okay, the park board met last night, it was a regular session for them, they had two items on there, there's one that's coming forward, or a couple that are coming forward to you tonight. One is, they will be recommending purchase of soccer goals, they also discussed an amendment to the parking on Hickman Drive by the splash pad, that'll be coming at a future meeting. They discussed the summer rec agreement with the school district, the school district was at the meeting last night, that'll be coming for you at the next meeting as well. They have, they're recommending an advertisement for summer seasonal employees, and that was the add to the agenda tonight. They did receive the update on the shoreline project in the campground, the riprap is all in, the planting will occur in June, so that is the planting of the buffer strip. The campground internet is up and running, the new program that we did with Gardenville Telephone, so everybody has the ability, and even if you want to try it and drive in there with your cellphone, you'll see, and it's got really good signal, so, so that's working so well. We're good, they received the proposal on the dog park from the member of the public that's been working on it, and the park board kind of gave her the authority to take it to the next step, she's gonna meet with staff, and then we'll look at it and probably shoot some holes in it and see what's missing before she comes back. And the tables and benches, the shade structures, that's all at the splash pad, all been completed, the only thing is the shades aren't on the top of the shade structures, we'll put them on when it gets closer to opening time. We talked about the arena parking lot, some maintenance that's upcoming there, talked about, threw on some ideas for a capital project for 2017, they got the updated list of the arena dry floor events, and then the park board last night was introduced to the new campground attendant who has arrived Friday, I believe, for, this was their first weekend on duty at the campground, so. Quite a few things for the park board, two items for you action tonight.
Questions? Okay, EDA report?
The EDA met today in regular session, it was a regular meeting at noon. They received the report from the Chamber of Commerce on the Sinclair Lewis Days activities, as you know, the parade route has changed and little things are different there, they're changing up the raffle and the treasure hunt, and more information is getting pushed out on their website about that. The Sock Center Opportunities reported that they have sold those two lots in the industrial park that they were working on, kind of by, by the storm pond between there and Beltline Road. They received the update on the apartment complex project, that all that is closed, they have broke ground and they are under construction at this time. They did talk about the railroad property, and they're recommending that the city openly market that on, on the market. And they did receive an update, we've been working with two different companies having a business opportunity in the industrial park, we're not sure if either of those will go forward, we continue to work with those, and also the small city grant dollars that the Stearns County HRA administered for us back in 2005 and 2006, and now that 10-year time has lapsed, there are some funds that have been returned to that, and they will be bringing that all back to the city in June for us to assume responsibility for, so we'll look at that and see if there's some opportunity there to put some of that back out in the community, or if we want to use that for a match for a future grant. In June, after that happens, then we'll have more discussion on that, so. No action items for the EDA tonight, information only.
Questions? Okay. We will then go on to our action items, 7A, approved library meeting room rental policy?
This is just a brief library room rental policy, we had a policy before, we looked at it and tweaked it a little bit, and just sent it out by email to the committee. As part of our agreement with Great Regional, we're responsible for developing the policy for the meeting room, so I do have it for you tonight, and request approval of it, you can see it's very, very generic, who can use it, how much it's gonna cost, where the keys are, what hours it's available. If they make it a mess and have excess garbage, we're allowed to bill them extra, that type of thing, nothing, too outstanding in there, so.
I've got one, if, is the library in charge of collecting the FISA? Or is it?
Yeah, if it gets, if they get it rented out to somebody that is a billable client, then they collect that and they bring it over to us.
Okay, alright.
And that's been that way for a long time.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the library meeting use policy?
So moved.
I have a motion by Keith, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approved resolution 2017-17, accepting bid for phone system.
As, as you know, we've been looking for several months for a new phone system for City Hall, and the operations committee did meet and receive proposals from these different companies, and then we had to obtain additional information from them. We had three options that we looked at, number one was by new phones themselves utilizing our existing lines, and we could either purchase or rent those. Option two was new phones using the broadband lines for voiceover IP, which purchase, lease or rent, and then option three was new phones utilizing new fiber. That fiber is in the building here, it's just not hooked up to our system right now. Those were our three options, we received proposals from Frontier Telephone, Arvin Communications, and Marco, and then after that, the committee, operations committee did discount option two because of the stability of the existing broadband lines for voiceover, we talked to other people that did the voiceover over broadband, and it's not as secure as we'd like it to be, or I don't know if I want to say reliable maybe as we'd like it to be, so they discounted that. Then we looked at the fiber, which of course would be optimum, however, the cost, the monthly cost of having the fiber, just having the service, is about $400 a month more than, than what we're currently paying for internet. So then they looked at option one, which was the, became the preferred option, to purchase new phones utilizing the existing lines, they are digital phones that are capable of becoming voiceover phones if we ever down the road decided to activate the fiber, so we're not, you know, putting anything that we can't use in the future. And so then we looked at the lease versus the buy option, and the buy option seemed better because after three years, you've kind of paid for the phone on the lease option, and we expect to keep these phones more than three years, we have the current ones for over 15 years, in fact, some of our phones came over from the old City Hall. So, in the end, we got the initial proposal, and then they were adjusted for comparable because the phones weren't identical, we did them for the same options, and then also there's a switch in the back room, and two of the proposals included a switch, and one of them said they could use the existing switch, but I did have them propose the price if they had to buy a switch, what it would be. So we were trying to do this as apples to apples as we could, and when it all came down to it, it ended up that the Marco phone system, the Marco with the Mytel phone system became the option that we are recommending, and that's for the $9,933, and if we do have to buy the switch, if they find that this switch is, will not work that we have, then the total cost would be $11,558. Either way, they are the low bid, and they also happen to be the preferred phone that after staff looked at everything, felt that they liked that phone itself better, so. The recommendation then is to approve resolution 2017-17, awarding the bid to Marco for the City Hall phone system, and that's a price of $99.33 for the phones themselves, and then a possible up to $11,558 if we need the switch. So, I know that's a lot of information, I hope you had a chance to look at it ahead of the meeting, but.
Questions?
Did I cover it all, Dave?
I think you got it all, yeah.
Okay.
Operating, commission, does it have anything to add to it, or is she covered?
No, just the big question was the switch, whether it'll work with the new system or not. That was, that is the price you got?
That is the price if we have the switch, yes.
Okay.
If the, if the switch we have back here will work, then it'll go back down to the lower price.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2017-17, awarding the bid to Marco for the City Hall phone system?
So moved.
Motion by Heidi, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other comments, concerns? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. 7C, approved resolution 2017-28, authorizing money, minor subdivision, Schaefer.
This is the old Creamery in town, and as you recall, last year Pam Board, or last week, two weeks ago, Pam Boardman was here from the History Center saying that they were the recipient of a donation of the old portion of the Creamery building, and of course, that's gonna require a subdivision of property, and that's what you have before you tonight. The parcel is Lot 5 in the north, 46 feet of Lot 4 of Block 17, original town site, and everybody else knows it as the pride of Main Street Dairy. The purpose of this request is to subdivide the older brick portion of the building, down a party wall from the new steel portion, to create a separate parcel of land, you have a certificate of survey in front of you, all the prints have been located, the property line is within the party wall, which is a firewall, the property otherwise is Zone C1, it meets all other zoning criteria. So after approval of the minor subdivision, the intent is that brick portion is donated to the Sock Center History Museum and Research Center for their future home. So that's what this resolution with this long legal description is, is simply subdividing off that brick portion according to that certificate, and creating a separate parcel of land.
And the building inspector had checked it, that's the reason why?
The building official was out there to check the, the party wall.
Right.
And to the firewall, to make sure that that would work for them, and of course, they've got a lot of homework ahead of them to look at the stability of the building for the, because it's a historical building, and they'll have to have an architect come in and, and do all that, but as far as the subdivision and being in the party wall, that part has been met.
Okay. I know I was honored to get a tour of the building, so it is definitely a unique building, and it's definitely gonna be a lot of work, and to get that up and running, but definitely is gonna serve its purpose, so. Any other questions, comments? Call the question, do I have a motion, ah, I should get a motion first, do I have a motion to approve resolution 2017-28, approving the minor subdivision?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Diane, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approved resolution 2017-29, authorizing money, minor subdivision, Click.
This is a separate request for a minor subdivision, it's actually been received from the Sock Center Country Club to subdivide a portion of the former Country Club golf course along the shoreline of Sock Lake on Lakeshore Drive, and that would be added to the neighboring parcel of Ken and Mary Nelson. You do have a copy of the certificate of survey, which shows a 24 feet of out Lot A adjacent to the Nelson's properties being subdivided from the larger Sock Center Country Club, now Center Graphics or Steve Click parcel. The 24 feet will be attached to the Nelson's Lot 9, will not become a separate parcel. So following approval of the subdivision, the parties will execute the appropriate deeds to complete that transaction, and then this takes care of the title issues that have been ongoing with that property, with the Sock Center Country Club. So what we're looking for tonight is to approve resolution 2017-29, approving that minor subdivision.
Questions? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2017-29, approving the minor subdivision?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any other comments, concerns? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. 7E, approved purchase of soccer nets.
This is the updated staff report that you have in front of you tonight, that has the prices for the soccer nets. The park board discussed and is recommending that the city purchase the new soccer, actually the complete goal system for the splash pad park, and they met last night on that. They're recommending that the city purchase two of the white painted goals from Minnesota Wisconsin Playground, and that is the set that is highlighted in bold, they're six and a half by 18 and a half by two, and they opted for the white painted over the aluminum just because they're much brighter and more visible on the site. So they are $1,889 apiece, and that is the state bid price, and they are recommending that we purchase two for that part.
Questions? Concerns? Do these get anchored down?
They do get anchored down.
Okay, so the wind can't blow them?
No, they, they're pretty much a permanent installation once they're in, and then, you know, five to seven years, then you would replace the net itself, but the goal would stay there.
Okay. And this was a budgeted?
This would be out of the park's budget.
Alright, okay.
So they'll actually be up all winter long?
They will be, yeah.
Don't foresee a problem with?
Matt can speak more on that if you have questions, but he did go and talk to the city of Melrose that have had them for many, many years.
Oh, okay.
And they leave theirs up, you know, they was wondering, what about the nets, and it's really in the summertime that the nets take the abuse from the sun, and not so much in the winter, so they leave them up, and they don't have any trouble with them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve purchase of two six and a half foot by 18 and a half foot by two foot white painted soccer goals from Minnes, Minnesota, Wisconsin Playground at $1,889 each?
So moved.
Motion by Keith, second by Heidi. Any other questions, comments? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approved ordinance 771, allowing Sunday off sale liquor sales.
And we had talked to this about at a prior council meeting, but according to the recent action of the legislature and by signature of Governor Dayton, off sale liquor establishments may be open on Sundays, this begins July 2nd, and that is only if the city's, city code itself allows it. So the attached ordinance amends the code by removing the restriction of Sunday sale, and this is for off sale, because for on sale, you already can be open on Sunday. So this, if they decide to be open, if they choose to be open, they can, they don't have to be, it's a choice that each of the establishment will have to make, there is no additional application fee or anything for this, on, on sale Sunday there is, but not on off sale. So this is ordinance 771, amending the hours and days of sales of off sale liquor.
Questions?
Was there any public feeling expressed either way?
We did talk to some of the establishments simply because we're right now going through the renewal process, and you'll have that at your next council meeting, and the ones that I talked to was like, they really didn't think it was gonna make a difference, there was some, the, the, the buyers that also have off sale, they're open anyway, so to them, it was no big deal. I did talk to two off sale places, and they're still weighing whether they even want to be open or not, because they'll have to staff it, will they make enough money to make a difference, and that's their own decision, I guess. I didn't have anybody say, no, don't do it, it was just kind of more like, we don't think we're going to be open.
Thank you.
I, I have a comment. You crossed out where it says on Sunday for no off sale and that sort of thing, but it says no sale after 1:00 AM on Sunday. That would include the remainder of the day then. We need a endpoint.
Oh, there's another line there.
Yep.
We'll have to take that off on both, both of those paragraphs.
Okay, well, I mean, it says no sale after 1:00 AM on Sunday, and every other one is gonna say 1:00 AM until 8:00 AM, because they open at some time, you have it written so that they can't open on Sunday.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we have to take that line out.
Oh, alright, or.
I'm just crossing it off right now.
Or, or put a date they don't open on, whatever the gate, or time they open.
So they can be open, but, there's no sales between 1:00 AM and 8:00 AM, it's, it'd be every day, so instead of Monday through Saturday, nor after 1:00 on Sunday, it would just be Monday through Sunday, or we'll do that.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
That's one of the concerns I had, to just clean that up a little better, and be better under the.
So, because they can't sell after 1:00 AM and before 8:00 AM.
Yep.
That's the restricted time, any date now.
Right.
So.
Any other?
I will fix that.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 771, amending the hours and days of sales of off sale liquor?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Any other questions, comments? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. 7G, approved advertisement for summer seasonal employment.
This is the new item that we added tonight, and this is a result of last night's park board meeting, but they are, received a proposal and they're recommending, they received a proposal from Matt Zinnio, who is recommending to advertise for summer seasonal employment to help in the Public Works Department, we'll be down on employee over the summer, and we get, the idea is maybe to advertise and get a couple youth in here that could help out in the department, and the pay for part-time seasonal is actually set by our contract at 11:04, you know, that was asked last night, and we didn't have an exact number for them. So what we're asking tonight is to approve the advertisement for summer employment, and then if we're successful and find some applicants that we think will work, that we would bring those back to you, and this is something that is in the seasonal budget of the park department.
Normally, you just hire one person, right, for summer?
Dennis is usually our summer employer, employee, and he plans to come back as well, this is just, these are two youth that we could stagger and use and help us out because we're gonna be short an employee this summer, who will be out on medical leave.
Questions?
How many hours are we talking?
Uh-oh, Matt.
Twenty per week.
Yep, we're gonna be very flexible with them.
Any other questions, concerns? And this is budgeted also, right?
It would be out of the seasonal budget.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the advertisement for summer employment?
So moved.
Motion by Heidi, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any other questions, concerns? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. We now go into our unfinished business, update on Ninth Street Project. Matt?
So, we met with the contractor last week, and they're ordering pipe, there's some storm sewer to be replaced in that, and we're replacing one sanitary manhole with PUC. They expect to begin early June, so, so I don't have a completion date, but it would be, I would say, whole end of July, and then we're gonna tie that in with our other two streets, First Street North and Pine Street South, about a three-quarter block section. So, there was one issue with a gas line that you could visibly see being run through a storm sewer that we are replacing, because we're doing removals, so we verified with CenterPoint, and it's already been taken care of, so it's been bypassed, so that can be removed. Other than that, it should go pretty smooth.
Okay, and we're gonna start after school's out?
Correct, yeah, for sure, so I'm anticipating that first to second week of June, things will start.
Because I think school ends June 2nd, if I remember right, so.
Yep.
It's scheduled for after that, so we won't be interrupting bus traffic, or?
For sure.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Update on Kate's Estates Drive Project. Keith?
Okay, Mayor and Council, we had our pre-construction meeting for Kate's Estates just, just yesterday, yesterday afternoon, so contractor at this moment is looking to start the first week in June, and it'll be done about middle of July, at least through the, through the Batumina's base course, so should go fairly, fairly rapidly, a fairly small project, so, any questions you may have on that?
Questions? Nope. Okay. And then the update on the Oak Street Project.
Oak Street Project, well, one is we haven't been able to get actually in touch with the contractor, they haven't returned our phone calls or emails, but I can tell you at least what's remaining, there's only a couple days worth of work or so, just cleanup type work, just left to be done, a little bit of cleaning out of the sanitary sewer manholes, there's some gravel that got down in there, we're gonna do that, gonna have them clean, or paint some hydrants, adjust manholes in the, in the roadway, we're gonna do a little milling right at Oak Street and, and Park where it, where it matches there, the water, it doesn't flow across from east to west, just the way they paved it in the base course, so we need to have them change that a little bit, so that'll be done, and, and also then the landowner that's on the northeast corner of that project, there was an issue, if you might recall, this driveway, and in fact, they did go over where the surface was, so that needs to be get repaired, so that's on their list of things to get fixed. Hopefully, we'll hear from them soon, and, because they do have a completion date coming up, it's like at the end of the first week or thereabouts of June is their final completion date, so.
Is there that intersection, second, and Oak has got a pretty good bump in it, if you have any kind of speed at all, if you're going through that intersection?
Going north, south?
Going west.
Going west. Okay, on, on which side, what, the west side?
When you're going from the east, yeah, it's on the west side.
On the west side, okay, well, I'll note that, and we'll take a look at it.
That is almost like a speed bump in that spot, if you're not paying attention, it will.
We'll, we'll look at that and see if there's some milling before we. We'll, we'll look at that and see if there's a milling before we do that wear course on that.
It's pretty clear, just, just coming up to the intersection, you can see.
Okay.
When you're coming from the west.
Yep.
Well, that's something hump there. Did you notice it right away, or did anything hump over the winter? You did right away?
Yeah.
Okay. Sometimes we can see storm sewer has some issues, but we'll take a look at it and see if we can get that milled out and fixed.
Yeah, that definitely needs to, because people on, some, some of the people that have talked to me about riding motorcycle or.
Yeah.
And there's no, there's no stop sign at that corner if you're going east to west. So, you can, you have a block from Main Street to pick up speed and.
Well, that was, that was supposed to be sort of a fun, you know?
It may have been a fun thing, but it's turning into a safety issue.
We'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on Oak Street? Okay. New business, golf cart ordinance.
The golf cart ordinance, ordinance is something that we have talked about in the past. And then, so the past two years, we've been watching what Stearns County did. They adopted an ordinance that will allow golf carts on county roads that have a posted speed limit of less than thirty miles an hour, if the city that they're in also has an ordinance allowing it on city roads with a speed of less than thirty miles an hour. So, the, the city in the past has kind of stayed away from the golf cart ordinance, simply because we have so many county roads in town. And then it would just be, you know, because St. Clair Lewis is a county road, and Beltlands a county road, and, and so we didn't pursue it. But then when the county started doing it, we've been watching how well it's worked, and it's worked out very well for them. The other communities have adopted it, and the county still has the ordinance in place. So, we brought it forward, because we've had other people come in, actually, the ones that are actually driving their golf carts on the street already are asking if we're going to make it legal. So, the things that, the kind of conditions that the county has on it is you have to have a driver's license, so this is not for kids. This is, you must carry proof of insurance, you can only operate during the daylight hours, not in inclement weather, you must have a slow-moving vehicle emblem, and you must have rearview mirror. So, this is like a vehicle that we are going to allow on the city streets. So, there's also things like no speeding, no travel on sidewalks, that would be typical of any ordinance like this. So, I brought this back to the city council to see, is this something you want us to pursue to adopt a golf course ordinance in Sock Center and allow people to drive golf carts on the street, or you just want us to stay away from it for another year? It's up to you. I'm bringing it forward to, to see if, if you would like to pursue it further.
Comments?
Has there been any conversation with the police regarding this? Are they in favor or not?
I did talk to the police chief about it, and I think he's kind of neutral on it. The one thing that's, what's nice about the golf cart ordinance that we could do is, is give him a sticker that's visible on the golf cart, and that's your license for three years or whatever. And then when the police see that, they know that person, they probably have a license, and they've already been informed of the rules. And that's just kind of a tool that the police can use. He did, he said that it, it could create some problems if people are abusing it. But on the other hand, people are already doing it, let's make sure they're doing it legally, you know, as far as the, the rules of the road.
Any other questions, comments?
These conditions, this is how this, the county has?
These are the counties, so ours would be at least that restrictive.
At least that restrictive.
Yeah, then we can put more on them if we want.
My only concern would, yeah, if we do move forward, would be to maybe somehow safeguard any kids that would be inside as passengers, whether or not it'd have to be like a helmet or seatbelt or.
And you could put something on it, no more, no more people than the seats will accommodate.
Yeah.
You know, so they're not piling on, no towing of trailers with people in them, you know. You know, you, you see a lot of that. And that's something that we would look into further if you want us to develop the full ordinance. And then we would also involve the police chief more in that as well.
I, I don't see a problem with us looking at having a full ordinance, but I would also like to include ATVs, because we're probably got more ATVs running on our streets than we got golf carts right now. And not, some of them that have kids riding them that don't have helmets on and.
See, and ATVs are already legal, you know, because they're permitted by the DNR.
Right.
And, so.
It's the safety aspect.
Right, I, I understand that it might be two parts of the same ordinance or two separate ordinances, but we can address ATVs, even if we don't do the golf courses.
Because I know with snowmobiles, there's only certain roads they're allowed to run on in, in the town. And I didn't know if the ATVs falls underneath that same category, or if there's, you know, how do we do that? So, I would like to research that at the same time.
We can bring that forward.
Do that, so.
Good idea.
Any other questions or comments?
Um, would there be operation on seventy-one?
No. The only place seventy-one would be crossing the bridge would be considered a crossing.
Okay.
You can cross the highway seventy-one. You can't drive down it.
Okay.
But they would consider the bridge crossing.
So, you could make a diagonal?
Yeah. However you want to make it through there. Actually, a golf cart will actually work up on the, on the sidewalk, on a golf cart on the bridge. I don't know if it's a good idea if you drop a wheel, but we'd look at that as well.
You're not supposed to be on the sidewalk, even with a pedal bike, so.
Do we need a motion on that, please?
No, no. I think that was just.
General consensus.
Just general consent is fine.
Yeah. Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda. You know, schedule of claims, unpaid claims of one hundred thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-one cents for that same total. We have resolution number two thousand seventeen dash thirty, accepting contributions of a hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty cents from the Men's Card Playing Group to be allocated to the senior center, three hundred and seventy-one dollars from Coburn's to be allocated to the ambulance department, and five hundred dollars from the Minnesota Dark House and Angling Association to be allocated to the fire department. I'd like to, on behalf of the city, acknowledge those three organizations for their contributions and thank them. We also have a gambling application for exempt permit requests from American Cancer Society for a raffle on August twelfth, two thousand seventeen at Minnesota National Bank. Do we have any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Keith, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Now, it takes us to our informational items. Vicki?
The one thing, the Middle Sock Water Festival is in St. Clair Lewis Park this way, this year, weather permitting. That is May eighteenth, and this is where we bring about three hundred fourth graders to town. And they have tents set up down there, and they are taught all things water, you know, the water and the environment, using the water, fishing in the water, and all those types of things. So, anybody wants to stop in, feel free to do so, and I'm sure they'll find a place for you to volunteer if you want to do that. Also, we have the Hazardous Waste Day, of course, again, on June fourteenth, and Scrap Metal Day coming up next weekend on the thirteenth of May. So, we've got a couple events coming up yet in the arena, and then that's, kind of wraps it up.
What are the hours for the Scrap Metal Recycling Day?
Until one on Saturday. Right, Sarah?
Eight to one.
Eight to one on Saturday.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the hazardous is nine to one on a Wednesday.
Any questions on those three items? I just wanted to recap. Last weekend, I spent the time at Madden's up at Brainerd for the Minnesota Mayors Association Conference. And we covered a lot of different subjects that were interesting. Race equity, police use of force. Also, one of the things on that was body cameras, which I was very interested to find out on body cameras. There's a lot of police forces that have them now. I found out that basically the cost of body cameras isn't as expensive as everyone thinks they are. It's the storage of the information that they hold. That is the part that everyone's running into problems with expense. That was the first day. The next day was Explorer Minnesota was there and went over all the tourism factors of what they do with the money and where we rank as a state on tourism dollars. The state actually, right now, is probably twenty-third in the nation on the amount of money they spend on tourism. And it's, seems to be going down, which is a concern. Then we also, Crow Wing County had their guy in and went over shoreland ordinances and permits and stuff like that. And every part of it was something that we got good information on and seeing how things work. A lot of that whole conference is a pure fact of being able to talk to other mayors of other cities and get input with problems that they've gone through and at, and vice versa. And one of the things, just eventually, I'm going to be probably asking the council to see if they have any consideration, is I talked to the mayor of Long Prairie, and he's very interested in it, in possibly having us two cities, or maybe even a couple more in the area, go along with and split the cost of having a rental inspector for apartment buildings, or anyone that's renting out the basement of their house. It would have to be inspected to make sure that it meets all the fire codes and safety things. And also along, if we could, depending on time and money, include code and ordinance as in that, as far as an enforcement officer, being the same person. Every city that I talked to last weekend says, we got all these codes, we got all these ordinances, but we don't have money or staff to be able to enforce all of them. So, the mayor of Long Prairie is very interested in going in with us if it's some direction that the council would like to go. This discussion is not going to happen overnight. I mean, there's a lot of factors that do, but that's one of the things that came out in the conference. And then they round out Representative Tom Emmer from the House of Representatives from Washington was there to speak to us about Washington issues and what's going on there. So, it's a very good conference. If anyone's got any questions or anything they want to ask me of that, I'm certainly open to it, you know, now or later. So, if you think of it, to get ahold of me, so. That now brings us to the end of our agenda. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Dave, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.